Okay, good evening. Welcome to the September 3, 2025 Special Voting Meeting of the Exeter Township School Board. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your beloved, courageous friends, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Feig, can you take roll call, please?
Jason Mel.
Here.
Julia Schaefer.
Here.
Deborah Bloom. Dr. Andrea Battler.
Here.
John Fiddler.
Here.
Dr. Ann Herring.
Present.
Timothy Morgan.
Here.
Travis Odom. Allison Wilson.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Feig. In addition to the eight board members in attendance this evening, we're also joined at the board table by our solicitor, Tom Warner, and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Kristi Haller, Superintendent, Mrs. Dawn Harris, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Josh Hoyt, Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Diane Skornavaki, Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Brian Feig, who serves as our Business Administrator and Board Secretary. The board did meet in executive session prior to this meeting to discuss personnel as it relates to administrator contract renewal. There are no amendments to this agenda tonight, and there are no, there is nobody signed up for public comments. Moving on to committees and personnel with Dr. Herring.
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the memorandum of understanding between Exeter Township Education Association and Exeter Township School District regarding long-term substitute step placement.
Second.
Do you need me to read the memorandum? Is that necessary?
I'm sorry, was that a question for me? I don't think we need, I don't think we need to read it, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a quick question. We're doing this because we have never done it in this manner before, is that correct? Okay, can you talk more about that?
So, there's no secret right now that in education, it's very hard to find qualified substitute teachers, particularly ones that, who are actually teachers. Our guest teachers are fantastic, we love them, they support our students, but it is always the preference of the school district to have a certified teacher in front of our children. Having said that, when you hire a substitute teacher, their pay is significantly less than what it would be if you were a teacher employed with a contract. So, right now, the way it is, the substitute teacher is placed on step one of the contract. However, to honor our teachers who are certified substitute teachers, we've asked the association and the board to at least honor their education, because that is, that's also critically important. So, while they may have 10 years of teaching experience with a master's plus, you know, 45, we're not giving them the full 10 years, we're giving them step one, master's plus 45, and we're hopeful that this may attract other retirees or certified teachers to come and sub in the Exeter Township School District.
Okay, any other discussion?
I'd just like to thank Dr. Herring for that question, that was going to be my question.
For me, I think I will be abstaining from this, even though it doesn't directly affect me per se, but since my spouse is a member of the ETA, I'm going to choose to abstain on this. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention, motion carries.
Okay, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following resignations: certificated staff, support staff, food service staff, extracurricular staff, substitute food service staff, retirements of certificated staff, appointments, transfers, change of status, additional assignments, and leaves of absence.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Ayes have it, motion carries.
Lastly, it is recommended that the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following course requests.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
And that's everything, Mr. Mel.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Herring. Next, public comments on non-agenda items, no one has signed up. Are there any board members that would like to be heard at this time?
I'd like to yield some time to Mrs. Harris.
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to say a special congratulations to two of our nurses who have been with the district for some time, who are on this agenda for retirement, Therese Knab and Sue Templin. They have been in, just an incredible part of our student services team and our nursing team. Our nursing team here in Exeter is top-notch, and they are going to be tough shoes to replace, and they will be missed very, very much, so I just wanted to wish them both happy retirement.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Harris. Anyone else? Okay, if there are no objections, we'll adjourn this special voting meeting. Hearing none, the special voting meeting is adjourned, and we are going to go right into our committee of the whole meeting. Mr. Feig, could you take roll call again, please?
Jason Mel.
Here.
Julia Schaefer.
Here.
Deborah Bloom. Dr. Andrea Battler.
Here.
John Fiddler.
Here.
Dr. Ann Herring.
Here.
Timothy Morgan.
Here.
Travis Odom. Allison Wilson.
Here.
Still eight present, one absent.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Feig. The meeting minutes are attached, does anyone have any changes or discussion they would like to make regarding meeting minutes for the August 5, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting and Special Voting Meeting, or the August 19, 2025 Board Voting Meeting? Okay, we will be amending the agenda tonight to include a presentation for an academic update, and from my understanding, that presentation will occur now.
I apologize that we missed this on the agenda, so moving forward, we won't make sure that does not happen again. If we could go to the next slide. As an administration, over the course of this year, you'll hear us providing monthly academic updates on various topics that impact our teachers and our students. So, those presentations, you'll see, will align to how we're meeting our comprehensive plan, and include things like the cycle of improvement, professional development, the selection and use of resources, standardized assessment data, local benchmarking assessment data, instructional practices, the MTSS model that we use here in the district, student-led experiences, and building specific highlights. And what I think you'll notice from the selection of topics is that it's both qualitative and quantitative data. So, we have the quality of, we have the numbers, and then we have the stories, which are very important to what we do here in education, because we deal with people, we deal with children, and so we want to highlight their experiences here in Exeter. So, if we could go to the next slide. So, just a reminder of what our comprehensive plan looks like, and I'm going to turn this over to Josh Hoyt right now, since he is the administrator that leads that, that plan and puts that together for us.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So, just as a reminder, we are in our current plan that we worked on, this is for the 2024 to 2027 plan, and the three areas that we highlighted upon to target were our third-grade reading proficiency, our seventh-grade math proficiency, and our graduation rate. This is the plan that's in place until 2027, and then we'll begin the process probably within the next year to start thinking about the 2027 to 2030 plan, so if you can go to the next slide. So, as you recall, prior to me coming in, Dr. Haller had talked to the board and the district about engaging in the cycle of improvement. That is a framework that the state of Pennsylvania uses with regards to identifying, initially for identifying schools for specific improvement, but then the state worked through the IU system and network to say that this is a framework that all districts and schools can use to identify areas of strengths and areas to improve, to put together a team and plan to engage in this cycle. So, in the 2023-24 school year, if you recall, we were in the first phase, which is where we started to educate ourselves on the cycle of improvement. We started to partner with the IU to develop and implement surveys, focus groups, collect a series of various data points to determine what we wanted our baselines to be, and then start to, with the goal of looking at some building trends. During last year, for the 2024-25 school year, building administration in conjunction with the Teaching and Learning Department, worked to establish school improvement teams within their buildings, and then from there, start to look at other things very unique and specific to their data, and start to develop professional development and engage in professional development to try to meet some of those needs. For this current year, for the 2025-26 school year, based upon that, at the end of the year, they put together pretty robust improvement plans within their specific building, based around specific areas, whether it was language arts, math, discipline, attendance, it was really up to the improvement teams and their data to identify those. So, for this current year, they will be in the process of implementing, with the assistance of their school improvement team, building administration and Teaching and Learning Department, to implement those plans, and then revisit them as current and new data comes in to see what changes need to be made, and whether other action steps might need to be implemented, whether it's professional development, support, instructional support in terms of those.
Dr. Hoyt, does, does Phase 3 recycle, or does, or is there a Phase 4?
No, so, at the conclusion of Phase 3, it's basically a cyclical process, so at that point then, you, you reevaluate, you adapt, you look at your goals, and then it, that's the concept of that cycle there, where then you, you adjust your course, and you, you know, you, you set your new direction, so.
To further add to that, I'd like to thank the, the teachers and the building administrators for working together to implement the cycle of improvement. As Dr. Hoyt said, this is a model that's used by PDE for schools that have been identified as essentially failing to meet certain areas in academics or perhaps attendance. We chose to take a model that we thought was very powerful and implement it into our district, so that we, we would have a process, a procedure in a very defined format as to how we could look at student data, and then use that student data to make informed instructional decisions, and that would support our teachers. And you, you don't want to be felt like something's being done to you, we want people to be part of the process, and we believe that the cycle of improvement allows us to have teachers part of the process. So, if you could go to the next slide.
Dr. Haller, just to, just, just to further explain that for the public that's listening, to be clear, this is not, while, while this is something the, the state would require if you were under a certain need, this is not something the state is requiring of us, this is something the district is choosing to do, because they feel it's important.
Mm-hmm, and that's why we added this slide for the public, because even though we're saying this, not everybody is probably going to listen to this board meeting, but we're going to be sending this presentation out to the community, and it outlines what Exeter's approach is, and states exactly that, that we are not required to do it, we have not been identified, you know, we don't know what the data will look like coming in, but we have chosen to take this proactive approach. And if there would be a school or schools that would be identified in the future, our process is already part of what we're doing, it's, it's part of, it's becoming part of our school culture. It's, it's how we look at data and how we make decisions. So, we commute to the next slide. So, I'm going to turn this over to Josh, as he's leading the teams.
So, a lot of people, a lot of organizations, a lot of schools, they want to get better, they want to improve. You know, eight years of my life at the, at the IU was, was dedicated to work like this, and, you know, I think all of us, in some facet of our life, want to improve. You know, I wanted to lose 20 pounds, but Sour Patch Kids eliminated that possibility, so, but, you know, but a lot of people say they want to improve, but it, you'll say, I, we want to get better at math, that's great, but what are you going to do? Well, we're, we're, we're going to, we're going to teach better, we're going to get this program. That's great. This process really gets you into a framework that, it forces teams to ask tough questions, to engage in root cause analysis, to really not just observe and obsess over a, a problem that's been in place forever, but rather to identify areas with very specific concepts and strategies to target that with benchmarks and goals in mind. So, that's, that's what makes this much different than just wanting to get better. So, it is a, it is a step-by-step process that you go through, and that's where we broke those things down, really, into the phases. So, when you look at this here, that really first part in Phase 1 was to identify those school teams, and that's what they did first, and there's a hyperlink in there that we'll, we'll show you, and again, I'd also like to thank, because this was a lot of hard work, but it was work worth doing. And, and the teachers and the administrators spent a lot of time throughout the course of the past couple of years, meeting to, to get together to have some really tough conversations about achievement data, about growth data, about attendance data, about discipline data, about curricular data, you name it, they were discussing it and really engaging, like I said, in that root cause analysis. But after identifying the teams, then they really, we started to collect that data, whether it was building-specific, district-specific, and then as well as with regards to the IU data, with our, our community and stakeholder data, our, our teacher data, our administrative data from those focus groups and the surveys. And then from there, it was where those teams started to engage in those root cause analysis, which is where you keep asking, one of the concepts they do at that is the five whys. You know, and you keep asking why five times, you know, our, our math scores are, are not improving, why? Well, you know, we're realizing such and such, well, why? And you keep doing that until you get something that is very, very specific. And from that point there, that's when they really start to identify two to three priority targets, that could be attendance, that could be a specific grade level math, that could be a subgroup, right? You know, as, as we mentioned before, you know, if you have 20 or more students in a specific group, those students are held to the same students as all students in that grade level. And then from there, once you identify that specific priority, you're going to say, what is your goal? And that goal has to follow what's known as the Smarty Principle, which means it needs to be specific, it needs to be measurable, it needs to be attainable, it needs to be relatable, it needs to be timely, it needs to be inclusive and equitable. And what it means by that is that you're thinking about all the students within that, that group, and that it means for everybody that are being instructed within the course of that, that concept or grade, or whatever you're measuring there. From there, you then to put in quarterly benchmarks, so along the way, what are you going to do to get there, so that you are analyzing that progress, you're not waiting until nine months, did we make it or not? You're doing check-ins along the way with that, for each of the quarters, and then additionally, you're putting in place action steps to achieve those. Those action steps could be professional development, it could be collaborative teams, it could be a specific instructional strategy, it could be the incorporation of a new resource, it could be partnering with another school district, it could be attending professional development themselves. That's what the, the goal of that proportion, or that specific piece is. And once those things are put into place, then the idea is to communicate that plan to the stakeholders within the school and district. And once that's there, then you begin to implement it, and then, as Mr. Morgan asked, well, what do you do after that? Well, you monitor and you adjust it, and when you make an adjustment, then you revisit that. If you realize that you're not anywhere close to where you thought you were going to achieve, you have to take a step back and say, well, what's going on here? What is the data telling us? What do we have to do different? Why is that happening? And now, what new action steps do we have to put in place to get to a new target? So, it is a very, very effective framework, that's not just applicable to education, this is what a lot of organizations that are highly successful in the field of the business, medicine, finance, use to identify and improve what's going on. So, this is evidence-based, it's research-based, and it is a very, very effective model, that takes time. This is not a one-year thing, this, even after three years, they'll tell you that this is almost a five-to-seven-year cycle, that, or five-to-seven-year long-term plan that you really, really start to see tremendous results with.
So, Dr. Hoyt, step two says building-specific data, step four says selects two to three priority targets, in your primary K to 4 schools, are you guys planning to align those priority targets to be the same across all three buildings, or could they potentially be different? And how do you do that analysis?
So, I'll be gray. So, obviously, we want to think about the comprehensive plan. So, third-grade reading is obviously something that we're looking across the whole district, but in one building, they might see their first-grade data saying X, but in another building, their second-grade data might be saying X, with being both a need. So, they might do something that's specific to those two, to their unique grades there, which in the end are going to have an effect cumulatively on grade three. What we did ask is that they did have academic goals, so many of the buildings have in one related to ELA, one related to math, but some saw certain things with regards to a certain subgroup in their building, whether that was special education, whether that was ESL, whether that was a specific race or ethnicity. Other ones looked at just overall attendance and things that they could do to target it. That was something that the high school looked at, was like, things that they could do specifically for attendance. So, it's, it's looking at things from that global level, and, and, and having those conversations, and that's what my role and my team's role is, is we were all a part of this, so that we could come back together and say, hey, a Watten's thinking about this, Jackson Walt's thinking about this. We would collaborate and go back and say, hey, the buildings are doing this, could we perhaps include some of the same action steps in there to support that, but in this building, it's helping grade two, and in this helping building, it's helping grade one? Which is one of the reasons why you saw Mrs. Bush come forward with Dr. Haller last year about what we did with the pilot with Ufly, because that we was, that was something in the moment, we were seeing right away, something we put in place to target those, with the end game of it eventually, hoping to increase our third grade. But it was that specific grade within there, in this process, that we saw right away that we knew we needed to do something.
Mr. Hoyt, or Dr. Hoyt, I'm sorry. The, as we look at the comprehensive plan, so the goals that you mentioned is in the goal setting, the goal-setting page, page 29 on the comprehensive plan, which is public information on, on the district's website. Listed are the, the three target years, right? There's an ultimate goal that you want to be at, percentage, a numeric number, by, by the end of 2027, but there, there are the target years that you, I think you mentioned, and this is for mathematics, ELA, and graduation between students, and then also the subgroup of students with disabilities. What, I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand, what, what is an action plan, if, if you're seeing your, your target year one, which is essentially the PSSAs that are coming out from, from this year, if we're missing our targets in, in target year one, what, what is the, the strategy, or what do you look at then to kind of course-correct, because trying to get things ready for target year two, or the end of 2026, what, what would you, what would you look at?
So, that, that was a topic of conversation all last year, when we were planning the budget and looking at how we were allocating resources. So, one of the things, of course, was using Ufly, the other was bringing in a product called iXL, which creates pathways, individual pathways for, of learning for students, and looking at the, looking at the, like, the root causes of why, why students perhaps were not proficient in third-grade PSSAs. One of the things that we discovered across the board, three through eight, is one of the areas that our students seem to really struggle is with key ideas and supporting details, that's a significant portion of the test. And systemically, it's an area where our students don't appear to be successful. So, that means that there is a deficit in our curriculum that we need to correct. So, one of the things that Becky Bush did was she pulled together ELA teams to work together over the summer, and again, thank you to the teachers who participated, and they created a curriculum document where we have a scope and sequence, pacing guide, and specific materials aligned to the various skills that students need that go along with the PSSAs. And part of that, too, is backtracking that into kindergarten, first grade, second grade, to make sure that we know that that is a priority skill across, across the board. So, that's one of the ways that you look at that. The other thing that we did is, we, Josh will speak more to the math, is we, we know math is a deficit, and we have math investigations, and have had math investigations for years, and it's time that we look at another program. So, I'll let Josh talk to you a little bit about that.
So, if I could just add one other thing about that question, though, too, is just as a reminder that the comprehensive plan is a compilation of all three buildings for K to 4, so it's, it's an average, basically. So, in theory, you could have one building that's already exceeding that standard, and you could have one that's not. So, that's why the concept of, with looking at the building level, too, is that we want to make sure we're improving everywhere, because we don't want people to just put a pat on the back, well, I've already beat that score, right? So, it's okay. If it's for me, I'm not here. Thank you, sir. So, so that's one of the reasons, so that's why we really look at, what are some trends may, perhaps within certain buildings or certain grade levels? So, again, we look at things, you know, you start to look at things from a systems level, so global, then, then perhaps, you know, by each building, and then perhaps even there, sometimes we do get down to, you know, like I said, subgroups there, so that's why those, those things can really help you to get into that specificity, and then that's where you start to target some of those action plans. You know, that was why, and I felt bad saying that when I first started here, was that I didn't understand why there was 100, 100, 100, because in theory, no one is ever going to get 100, right? And you don't want to create goals that you're never going to create, because what's the point of creating the goal? So, those goals were truly identified by looking at what was the end expectation, and back, back mapping that all the way to where we are now, so that those targets were achievable, they were relatable, and they were still measurable. But in the event, when, if, when the data comes back and is truly public, if we see that, you know, within that, that we're still 20, you know, 15 percentage points away, well, you know what? That's where you still have the conversation, we know this is where we need to be. But what are some things that we can do, just that we can still make some tremendous gains, right? And, and, and that's where you just keep doing it. You, you want to make sure that you're not always just focusing on the negatives, that you are celebrating some of those successes. And if we can continue to make some of those gains, you know, there's a big model that if you can get 1% or 1% better every day, you know, that's a, that's a really, really achievable thing. And that's the model that we want to do, is we want to try to get better each day, each month, each week, so we can get there. So, that's going a little bit outside the box, but... But that's, I hope that answers your question in regards to that, so.
That's fine. You sounded like a coach just there, you know.
I live to serve. You tell me what I need.
I give 101%. No, that's, no, thank you, Dr. Hoyt. Yeah, I think the, I think ultimately what I'm just trying to understand is, you know, obviously, we're, and I think you already mentioned this, we're not beholden to the state to make sure that we're reaching these targets. But obviously, these are a plan that we put in place for ourselves to, and the board's job of this is to make sure that we are doing everything we can to give administration whatever they need in order to achieve these goals that are put in this plan. So I'm just kind of, that's where I'm at from my end, is just trying to understand, you know, is there anything that, you know, as far as your strategy goes, is there anything that you see at this present time that would be needed by administration to help those goals, or is it a little too premature yet?
No, I mean, I definitely, you know, when I first started coming in here a couple of years ago and looking at things that were going on math, teachers were doing a really wonderful job doing with what they had. But because the resource that was there has kind of been outdated, you know, was, you know, at that time, and I'll recall it, and I'll put myself out there, I told you three years ago, don't look at a new program, right? Well, you know, now we're finding out that that is not looking like that one's going to be able to be in existence anymore. So we don't want our teachers to not have anything and just go off what they can. So, you know, it's, I've been doing, you know, I supported almost every district in the county at some point, sometimes twice, over those eight years in helping them research, investigate, implement, and monitor a new math resource. And, you know, when I started here, we were some, we were using something K to five, then we were kind of using something in six, and then we were something seven, eight, and then we were using something nine as well. That creates a lot of haphazardness for kids with math, different language, different strategies, different schema, all of those different things. Whether you're, I don't care what type of student you are. You could be a successful math student, you know, the evidence and research will tell you when you move into a district in third or fourth grade, even a high-achieving student, if you come from program X to program Y, you're going to hit a wall at some point because of the assumptions it thinks you has. So that being said, the goal was to, we spent some time, we have seven to 12 in a really strong framework together. And now knowing what we know is going to happen with investigations, this gives us an opportunity to look at something that can be cohesive K to six that will translate well going into seven, 12. So, you know, the time that I've spent and the context that I have was still with the IU and the other district math leaders in both this county and surrounding counties, you know, there's a resource we're fairly confident in that we're going to have math teams look at over the course of the year and look at how will it work with the next year with what we are already doing? What are some things that we think might not work so well for us? And how can we build something that's going to be sustainable to meet the needs that we have? Because I do believe that what the data is showing us for math and what our students are capable of, there is a discrepancy right now tremendously. And that's really what one of my goals is. And so I'm excited to work with Mrs. Bush and Dan Wilczek and the teacher leaders and to be able to support the teachers on this. Because, you know, one of the greatest stressors for an elementary teacher is, number one, is a new principle. Number two is a new math program, and number three is a new reading program. So, you know, this is a, you know, it's something that is a challenge, but they're going to have a lot of support with it, and it's something that we're excited to get started with.
So Dr. Hoyt, real quick. Sorry, one more question.
You don't have to apologize for asking questions.
I don't envy your position because you're trying to hit a moving target. I think we all recognize that. So what happens, you know, we've had extensive conversations at this boardroom, at this table about how our population is changing within Exeter and Borough of St. Lawrence. And so as you go through this cycle of improvement, how do you take that data and determine whether or not we're doing the right things and seeing improvement, even if the scores don't always reflect it? Because we know socioeconomically, transancy, English that is not a primary language, all those things, as these populations shift within our township and our borough, that that can affect learning. And so how do you say, hey, we stayed the same, we went down a little bit, but everything we're doing is right and we're seeing improvement?
So Dr. Howler's kicking me under the English. No, she wants answers.
And I think it's a real problem, right?
So that's a fair question. So what I was going to say is it is a moving target. And because the state is constantly changing the formatting at times of the tests. So the tests that the kids take one year and the questions might not necessarily be the same. They change, they change all different things on us, and we don't always get the information in real time to support students. So how, as educators, do we monitor and adjust our teaching based on things like new students coming into the district or second-language learners or special-education students who have a variety of needs? And the answer to that is that we look at our benchmarking assessment data. So one of the things that we do at the elementary level is we use something called Akadience, where we look at students' decoding skills, we look at their fluency. And then, again, we're also brought in iXL, which also has benchmarking capability. Before, we were, we still are using STAR, but now we're exploring how we can use iXL to, in real time, monitor and adjust what students are doing. And it also, like I said, creates that pathway for each student. So there's a different pathway for every child. So if I'm coming in from a school district in Montgomery County, and I'm here, and now I'm being tested, and it's going to automatically put me somewhere else, and the teacher can see that information and adjust to it. The other thing that we do all the time with our teachers, our teachers are doing regularly, is differentiation of instruction, where the teachers are using data that they're gathering from classroom conversations, reading with students, their formative assessments, and they're making plans and adjusting and working with students in small groups. So PSSAs are the front-facing public information. And, but everything that we do in schools day-to-day with the information that we gather is what I believe is most critically important. Because that, PSSAs capture students over a couple of days in a very high-stress situation. And, you know, we're dealing with, you know, third graders are eight, nine years old. And so, and some of them, and there's no accountability for PSSAs. The accountability is for the adults. So there's always a possibility that some students are not going to take it seriously. We have parents that they decide to opt out because they can. So we're not even getting a full snapshot of what our students are doing in a PSSA because there are so many variables to that data. But by us having those, again, conversations with students, knowing their story and looking at that benchmarking assessment data, that's when we can truly see the growth that our students are making. And unfortunately, that's not something that we can share as a story necessarily to the community, other than saying, we're a K-12 public school system, and we have a fantastic graduation rate, and that didn't happen by chance. It happened because we have kindergarten, we have kindergarten teachers all the way through high school that work really hard in this district, who really care about kids and are willing and wanting to do anything that we can to make sure kids are successful in this district. And it's really a tribute to all the educators who work with our kids here. And Dawn wants to say something.
Yeah, I just want to add to that, you know, we're sort of talking from an elementary lens in terms of benchmarking and things like that. But don't forget the other thing we do at the high school level, which we've talked about repeatedly at different board meetings, is that concept of tracking at-risk kids and having like a system and a framework for doing that. So at-risk is a heavy term. And the kids that they track on that list, some of them have a lot of needs, and there's a lot going on, and they need a lot of help. And they're, you know, in a lot of danger of dropping out and all of those things. But there are other kids on that at-risk list or just on there because they're struggling in one class and need some type of support and need some type of intervention. So that's sort of the quote-unquote benchmarking data that we use at the high school to do that tracking and to see if what we're doing is working and, you know, what's, other students need help and whether or not our interventions are successful.
And just, I'll add one quick thing, you know, if you ask what else. You know, very fortunate to have Mrs. Bush and Dr. Joel Caro, our two curriculum supervisors, who are in the classrooms and seeing what's going on and being able to see what instruction is occurring, as well as the building administrators, along with Mrs. Seifert and Mrs. Kaiser, Mrs. Leonard, like we, and all the building administrators. We see what's going on within the classrooms that we can give qualitative feedback, we can give quantitative feedback. And, you know, I'll tell a very, very quick story. There's a teacher who's sitting in the audience right now from the building, who a couple, time to me is, I just know it was some time ago, within the last two years. But, you know, reached out to myself and her building principal and said, hey, in math, you know, I have some kids who are struggling here, succeeding well. I really want to try this strategy with small groups. Can you come in and provide some feedback? Maybe, you know, take a group, this, that, and I want to see how this goes. That's very vulnerable as a teacher to do, and I give that teacher a lot of credit. And you know what? The data, the data showed that what happened worked. And I'm very proud of that, that somebody was willing to put something out there and say, hey, can you come in and see this and just give me some feedback? That says a lot about that individual. And a lot of our teachers do that. But, you know, those are examples where teachers look at something and go, you know what? My makeup is much different than it was last year. What are some other tools in my toolbox? And maybe those tools are people that could maybe help with this. So, you know, I applaud the teacher for doing that, and the proof has been in the pudding with terms of what we were seeing with that individual's data. So kudos to that person, but I won't name names, so.
I've got a couple of questions. I feel like I'm at Shady Maple and I've got all this food in front of me. Some great data here, but it's, I'm kind of lost. I'm adrift. You talked about math investigations?
Yes.
Is that, is that a math program?
That's correct. So that is, that's what we are, we use for K to five.
And did you say that we're going to get rid of that?
Because it's being depreciated. It's going to not so much be supported on the back end. There's also some alignment concerns with that with regards to just how students, with regards to the scope and sequence standards. There's a lot of having to supplement right now with certain skills and such because it's more aligned to the National Core standards. And in PA, we only adopted about 87% of the National Core, but we also threw in some other concepts related to money and time that we have to supplement for. So just because of that, and just because the teachers, too, haven't really gotten, received a lot of time with regards to some math support and math professional development, in my opinion, it's time to look at something that's going to be much better for our kids and teachers.
So why, if we know all of these bad things about it, why are we, why did we wait so long to switch?
Well, again, because we were making some other changes and some other curriculars, to do too many changes at once is a challenge. You know, myself kind of being two years into it, collecting more data, I didn't want to make an extreme rash change until we knew what was really going on. And from there as well, I think, you know, for us, whether or not it would have been depreciated, we were constantly, constantly tweaking things, whether it was now adding DreamBox, adding iXL, looking at other things. But because now we're kind of piecemailing so much, it's, we're trying to look for something that's going to, to meet our needs with it. So it wasn't like that investigations wasn't the sole provider of math instruction for our kids. We were, we were making changes along the way, but because of these other things we've had to do, it's just a lot for a teacher to have to use this, pull from this, use this, use this, to try to meet those needs, and then you're not creating a lot of cohesiveness with it. So we want to try and find something that's more cohesive. And I'll be bluntly honest, too, going with a new math resource is a pretty significant budgetary item. You know, those range, when you, when you put in something like a new resource like that, you're looking at about a quarter of a million dollars to invest in it to start off with because you're talking every kid, every teacher, new manipulatives, new resources. You have to get the digital licenses, like, there's a lot that goes with it. So I was also trying to be fiscally responsible with that and try to find things that we could do so that we could make an informed decision. Additionally, with those other changes we were starting to do with ELA, we were trying to make sure some of those things are in place because there's a tremendous amount of evidence right now that's saying that a child's inability to read is having a significant impact on their success in mathematics because of the ability to decode and comprehend what the question is asking them.
Well, Dr. Minor said that four years ago. And that was, that's what impressed me about her early on. If you can't read the problem and understand the problem, you're not going to be able to solve the problem. Back to this math, what, if any, correlation are you seeing between math investigations and our standardized test results?
Well, I mean, the last three years, you've seen that we've been, you know, stagnant.
A lot of red instead of green.
Yes, yes. You know, one of the things last year that we specifically targeted is we saw that in fourth grade, measurement from a larger unit to a smaller unit was missed across the whole district. So over last summer, we put something in place to help support that. We're still things, things regards to the fractions, which is third grade. It's introduced a little bit in first and second grade as partitions. But, you know, that, that concept of a fraction, kids were missing. And, you know, you go back a couple of years ago, those are the kids who lacked a lot of foundational skills due to the disruption in their learning. So, you know, now we're looking at kids who are, you know, you look at that kindergarten cohort coming forth now, they're here in an environment where they're receiving that. That's where we're, you know, moving forward if we can go with this cohesive product that I believe that we're not going to have as much haphazardness, as I said, with regards to mathematics.
Okay. So we're, it's kind of a wait and see. I mean, that's your prediction, but we have to wait and see if switching to a new program is going to, is going to actually produce those results, right?
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't want to use the word, because we're always seeing and we're always changing. So, you know, we do benchmarking in math as well. So like, we do math benchmarking in STAR. And our STAR results were very, were very close to what our PSSA ones were with regards to three and four. But, you know, now that we're putting in a new piece with this iXL this year, which is very, very aligned to the eligible content and assessment anchors, so we're always looking at those changes right away. If we, you wait until the results come back in late summer, early fall to make any changes, you're, you know, you're, I don't want to say it because it has something to do with the horse, but you know what I'm trying to say, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And Dr. Howler, you said, and I'm aware of this and have been aware of it, that some parents can opt out of the, what percentage of our kids don't take the PSSAs?
I wouldn't be able to give that, but that's something we can look up for you, so. But, yeah, I mean, that's.
Is it significant, or is it a handful?
And I don't want to give you information where, you know, because a handful and a significance can sometimes be mutually exclusive or not.
You can just bring it to the next meeting. You don't have to call.
Yeah, because it's PSSAs and Keystone exams, you know, it's both of those that are. But one thing I do want to say about, you know, math programs is, is that it will tell you just, and I'm being upfront about this, it takes three, you know, with change theory, it takes three years to see results anyway. So implementing a new math program, everybody will see a dip usually the first year, and then you'll start to see an increase there. So it does, no matter what you did, it takes three years when you change things to see an increase on there. So that's why, you know, we want to put something in place that is very cohesive and sustainable so that we can support people along the way with this, both kids, teachers, and parents and administrators, so.
And what, since you were with BCIU, what do your contacts throughout the county, your counterparts, are they also switching out of math investigations, or did they never have it? I mean, what, what percentage of the 18 school districts in Berks County either was or is still using?
We were it. You know, even, even when I started at the IU, eight, you know, back in 2000, I don't know, was that 15? And I remember, you know, Dr. Davies was here at the time when I was working at the IU, and he asked me a lot of math questions. But there was nobody else within the county, and I don't believe there was anybody else in Chester or Montgomery County that were using it at that time or any time, so.
Were using math investigations?
Correct.
So what year did that start, actually?
There you go, 2011.
No, excuse me, hold on, wait. 2009 was when I was born, started in five, so 2011, yes. So I did the first meeting about it. It started when my daughter was in kindergarten.
Yeah, I had started at the IU in 2015, and I knew that it was in place at that point already, so.
So we've been using something for 14 years, right? Is that math, right? We're on math, so I, so 14 years of.
No, that's not 14, hold on, wait.
Right, which is why when I started, I wanted to gain a gauge on things and.
I'm sorry, 10.
Yes.
You know, we can't respond to what previous administrations did or did not do as far as curriculum. What we're saying is that this administration worked with the teachers to determine if, in fact, there were deficits in the resource that we were using that we could supplement, because there is no perfect resource. There's no, there's no perfect resource out there. There are no math resources that align to what Pennsylvania is doing as far as standardized testing because standards, because Pennsylvania chose not to adopt the Common Core as the way the Common Core was presented and written. And that's the way textbook company. way the Common Core was presented and written, and that's the way textbook companies met, that's the way they put together their books. They put it out for states that purchased for the entire state, Texas, Florida, both of, both states adopted the, the Common Core as it was written. So no matter what math program you select in Pennsylvania, it is not going to align to what is on our standardized assessments because it, they don't align to Pennsylvania. They align to the, the bigger states that purchase them by state. So to be fiscally responsible because the budget is, is an issue here in the school district, we looked at, looking at the data which hadn't been done and trying to determine where there were gaps in instruction. Plus, we had a pandemic where now kids are, have all kinds of gaps that are not related to math investigations, and tried to make sure that we were making the best decisions that were possible. Based on everything that we've done and the data that we've seen, we have now come to the conclusion that it is time and it is our recommendation that we are going to move forward with a new math program. In order for that to happen though, the board's going to need to support it. That means you're going to have to make sure that there's money in the budget so we can get the materials that we need and that we get the professional development that the teachers deserve in order to implement a program like this because it is going to be a ton of work, a ton of work. And so we were trying to look at it in a different way to see, hey, you know what? Maybe past administrations, there was a miss here. Let's do our own data analysis. That's why we had Josh come in when he worked for the IU and did a whole study about what we were doing K through twelve to make those determinations. And again, like, we're three, this is year four for, for myself and Dawn, and I would say that we have moved pretty quickly based on our time here in this district with the changes that we've made, especially with bringing in iXL, which is a, a program that is aligned now to what is happening with the PSSAs, with Pennsylvania standards in general. However, what I will say, there is a trend across the state, across the United States right now where people are looking to eliminate getting rid of standardized tests completely. So it looks like Oklahoma's already moving forward with that. New Jersey is revamping the way that they're doing standardized testing, they're piloting something. So we could go through all of this and the state could turn around and say, you know what, we're going to put in that waiver, we're not going to do standardized tests anymore. And then we're back to the benchmarking assessments that we, that we either develop ourself or that we purchase. And either way, none of that's going to be in any way directly related to a math program unless we purchase a math program and use their, their benchmarking assessments. That's how convoluted and complicated this is. And so, you know, when you're spending a district's money at like, you know, half a million dollars or three quarters of it, we, you want to, you want to make sure that you have answers for the community and for the board and, and for the teachers as to why we're making such a drastic change. Because changing a program is, if you're, if you're a teacher and you've ever been through an implementation of a program, it's, it's a lot. It's, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of time, it's all new learning, and we have to start basically from scratch. So it's, and it's not just the implementation of the program, it's going back, and this is where so many districts make a miss on this, is going back and seeing where there's going to be gaps created by the implementation of the program. So now we're going to have to go back and look and see, okay, well, in this program, this is where they're teaching this, and this is where they're teaching this, and what does our data say? Because they're still going to be supplementing that teachers are going to need to do for, as Josh, Josh said, at least three to five years because it's cohorts of kids who have been now exposed to one program who are now in another program. So you want to make sure that, I had a professor one time say, you don't want kids to be an accident of geography. That can very well happen if you don't take your time and, and think through an, an implementation of a program.
And is this, just so I understand, is this K through twelve, this program?
No, so we, it's K through six. And as Josh said earlier, there was issues as well that we, he had determined with the teachers and the teams and through looking at data analysis that because we were using various programs at different levels, kids had all these transitions in math programs, which was, in our opinion, based on what we're seeing with the data, exasperating the issues that kids, that kids were having. Also, you know, at the junior high level, we have kids that are taking PSSAs and also taking Keystone's, and they don't, they don't align. So the kids that are taking the algebra are not learning what is on the eighth grade PSSAs. So they might not be successful in the eighth grade PSSAs, and you, you see that across the board at the state level with PSA data for that seventh, eighth grade, and it's because so many of them are, are taking Keystone's and they're successful in the Keystone's, but then it looks like nobody knows any math at the junior high level, and that's not really the, the true picture of what's happening. So it just becomes very, you can manipulate data to say and do anything. But if you don't know the why, then it becomes, it, it becomes more challenging.
So if we get this new program K to six, won't they still be going through this major transition from six to seven and beyond?
So for this specific one, this one in the districts that I worked with, regardless of what they used in seventh grade, or wherever they transitioned from like pre-algebra to algebra, whatever, there was not as much gaps and things that had to be filled with in there. So, I mean, and like I said, Dr. Haller is right, like, they are getting to that PSA content and Algebra One content, but it's, it's at, it's not at the depth of level that's needed because you're teaching two different curricula in one year. One other thing I just want to share with you too is that the, the, the science standards changed K to twelve, and PA shifted from this to their quote unquote next generation science standards. Huge shift, huge shift. And that, again, I'm not talking about previous administration, but we were behind when I started. So we had to get some things in place to make sure that those things were ready to go, and there was, there was fiscal resources, fiscal resources had to be purchased for some of the updates to make sure we were meeting those needs because as you're where the tests shifted, so now that there's a science test no longer in fourth grade, it's now in fifth grade, it's still at eighth grade, but, and it was field tested as the first year last year, but this year it does count. And those were on the new science standards as, as it relates to that. So we had to provide, you know, a budgetary component as well as professional development and time to work with the teachers, and, and Dr. Elkaro did, and Dan Wilczek did an unbelievable job with that in working with the teachers, and, and we used a resource called Mystery Science that was very, very much aligned to that so that we could get science K to twelve within here. So again, it's one of those things, like, if you do too much too quick, things, things will fail. And, and, you know, you, you want to make sure that things are done very systemic and what's best for kids and what's best for teachers. So we're really confident in this plan, I'm excited about it, and, you know, I, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing the direction that things are going to go with it.
Good, thank you.
I just want to make one comment. I just want to thank you all for all this hard work, and I know we've spoken a lot about it, but if you could kind of explain again what the point is of these standardized testing for the PSSAs and Keystone's so we all have a better understanding? Because I feel like we are the cat chasing the mouse with all these standardized things that the state pushes out to us, but it's not truly reflective of how well our students are doing in the classroom, reflective of the grades that they're getting and the benchmarks and testings that we're doing. So I feel like we are measuring ourselves up against something that isn't measurable, and we are not giving ourselves a fair representation of how great we are, and we're comparing ourselves to world news and everybody else. And I just really don't think it's fair when we're trying to follow the rules of standardized testing but not reflecting the great work we do. So if you could just.
Sure. So, I mean, we're, we're assessed here in grades three through eight for ELA in math. For science, we're assessed in grades five and eight. Those are the PSSAs. So those are based upon those grade level concepts that are deemed. So if you are a fifth grader in fifth grade ELA, but you're on like a second grade reading level, you are held to fifth grade standards. So you are taking that assessment. They've changed parameters on things too that based upon a certain IQ where in years past, they gave provisions to be able to support students like that, they're making kids like that, that, that are in that position that it's not what's best for them to take a PSA on that level. You're putting a lot, there's a lot of kids who have a lot of transitions in and out. So if a student, you know, has missed such and such days to, due to a medical need, due to a mental health need, they're still taking that assessment, and they could have missed fifty percent of the year, but they got what they needed because that's what they needed, but their score counts for us. And when you have the opt-outs, you know, in my, in my time at the IU when I worked with districts, many of the people who chose to opt-out, which is their right, were students who tended to score proficient or advanced on those assessments. When you remove those from the overall, you're moving them from the denominator, lessening your sample size, but then you're also shortening your numerator, which is your proficient and advanced, thus making your scores look a lot lower. I'm not giving excuses, I'm just giving you quantitative numbers here. But that is based upon a year's worth of content, but you are getting those assessments sometimes in March. If you have a really nasty winter, you're, you, so basically you're trying to squeeze in nine months of content within a seven month span in some cases. So, you know, every district faces these challenges, and, you know, in my opinion, it's not a true representation, but it's how we're measured, and that's why we look at the data and we try to do what's best. We do really value our benchmarking data because that's real time with what's going on, and, and those are the ones where we tend to make a lot of adjustments. They do change the rules sometimes, sometimes they'll, you know, this constructive response question and/or concept that's been assessed for the last three years, all of a sudden is no longer assessed. And if you spend, your students are really good at that, spend a lot of time on that, and then you get something that's not necessarily related to that where they struggled with, again, you're, you're getting a, a difference within that. So, you know, and, and then you get into the high school level, you're telling kids, you got to pass these three if you want to graduate from high school. Well, you know, not everybody's a good test taker, and, you know, at that point, all of us sitting in here, the kids who are currently in eighth grade have taken more assessments in just their last three years than all of us have ever taken in their life, in our lives, probably combined too. So, you know, an eighth grader who is an algebra, if you're an eighth grade student who's in Algebra One, you are taking a science PSA, you are taking a ELA PSA, a math PSA, and you're taking an Algebra One Keystone exam. So basically, your time in school from April until the middle of May is taking high stakes testing. And, you know, that's, that's a lot of pressure for kids. So, but again, that's how we're measured, and that's the work that we put in to take a look at. We might not all agree with it, but that's what we have to do. And, you know, I'm, I'm really proud of the work that people put into it, but, you know, again, when you have that student who might be fifth grade on a certain grade below reading level, our teachers do a wonderful job of doing what they can to meet their needs. And however they end up on the PSA, they end up on the PSA, but they're growing. And that's what our data, if you remember, showed is we might not be being proficient, but we are growing. And if you keep growing, I talk about that one percent, eventually you're going to get there.
Thank you, Dr. Hurd.
Next slide, please. So a big part of the action steps is related to professional development, and, you know, you've heard us talk a couple of times here about consistency. This is a lot of some of the work we've been doing, and we continue to work. I'm not going to read all of those slides up there, but our team, along with Dr. Haller, we do a lot of curricular touchpoints throughout, ever since my time's been here. We meet often in terms of making things are consistent, and we've gotten there with our scheduling, with our resources, very targeted professional development. You know, our professional development days, although we do try to plan them out for the year, we make changes. Last year, we made a change two weeks before the day because we saw a need of what, and it was what we needed. So, and that's what you want to do to get better. You don't just want to plan something and do it because that's what you planned, you want to do something because it's targeted and it's what needs to be done. So we look at these three major themes of consistency, organization, and communication with regards to the things that we do with curriculum, instruction, and assessment so that we have systems and frameworks in place to support all of our stakeholders. You can go to the next slide. So we just wanted to give you a little overlay of what we do plan on doing this year, but again, some of these could be subject to change as things come up. So we have half days and full days, and we're very, you know, I could tell you, I spoke, I've said this many times up here, but I am very, very thankful for the fact that we have this time with our teachers on half days and full days. It is very valuable with what we do on these times. And, you know, so we do take a look at our benchmarking data on some of those half days. We're, as we mentioned, with the K to two, just go back a little bit, thank you, the K to two U fly, and reevaluating that, seeing what our needs are. Again, safety and security, that's the number one reason why we're here, so still doing things related to that. Albert IO, you heard me bring to the board last year, that has really hit the ground running. You saw communication coming out that all students in the district have access to AP to prepare, SAT, everything there that's part of that, that, that's going to help them along the way, along with the course content. You know, I mentioned at the last board meeting about AI, we're doing AI professional development on both our half day and we, our November in-service day for our secondary teachers is entirely, entirely around the concept of AI. We actually have the PSCA lead task force member who's in charge of AI across for all PSCA in the state coming in to work with our teachers in the morning, and then we'll be doing some teacher-led and administrative-led AI sessions for the rest of that day. But again, you see, there's a lot with regards to student data, there's allowed to instructional planning. Mrs. Leonard and her team will be doing with our K to four teachers, I always say it wrong, but mental health, teen youth aid, and I know it's those words, but they're just put together in some order in some way, shape, or form. But doing some work with de-escalation with Mrs. Seifert and working with our Reifman staff with regards to helping to support our students and, and looking for strategies for behaviors and helping them to create a really positive learning climate and culture within there. And also, we're doing some things, some wonderful special education, professional development with our attorney sitting in the room right here to be able to provide some support with our teachers, which we are also very, very thankful for because it keeps us on the forefront of what are the current trends, what are things we can do better, and how can we provide the best learning environment for our students and teachers.
So one of the challenges that we face as a district is how do you fit it all in? And that's why your support of the school district calendar is essential. You might not think it, but it is. We've added a number of half days and, and full days to the calendar in order to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our teachers by looking at assessment data, but also then meeting the requirements that we have from the state for those different mandates that were required to address through school safety and, and other things that we're, we need to do. I know that in the past and, and perhaps even now, people have asked, you know, why, you know, why, why are we going to school this many days, or why are we, don't, why don't we have this calendar or that calendar? And, and part of it is because of our commitment to making sure that our teachers do have that professional development time. The state did say you can go one hundred eighty days and/or you can do nine hundred hours, nine hundred ninety hours, and, and that's, and we are complying with that, but we, we need the calendar in order to meet the professional development days, and we're not going to front-load them all or put them all on the back end of the calendar because of the fact that the teachers need that time throughout the course of the year to look at the student data and then make plans and adjust. And so if we front-loaded and put everything, or at the end, there would be no time for teachers during the course of the year to reevaluate programs that we've put in place and look at that data. So the teachers absolutely need that time to collaborate with each other and to look at data and make those decisions. So that's why our calendar looks like this because we believe that professional development is a critical part of improving the student experience here in Exeter.
I'm going to ask a hard question. So just like children and adults learn at different speeds, they learn with different modalities, albeit the technological advances or new programs implemented. So what we're seeing is a generalized plan, which we have to have, right? Everybody has to have a program, certainly appreciate that. But how does the district create individual development plans for, for employees that may just, you know, need additional coaching, or they're not getting up to the level, the speed that maybe some others are?
That's a, that's a very fair question, and adult learning is very specific because you're dealing with professionals who have various levels of education, and having them get, you know, sit and get all day long is what is known to not be an effective form of professional development. The most effective form of professional development is when you implement a coaching model, instructional coaches. The district in the past did have several instructional coaches, but that was a, a budgetary cut. But again, according to research, instructional coaches are the most effective way that you can provide professional development. In lieu of that, what we have done here is we use. In lieu of that, what we have done here is we use the staff that we have. So we do have three reading specialists at each building, and we rely very heavily on them to provide training for our staff during morning times and on those PD days, so that that way there's a person in-house for them to go to. Now, some of that is the responsibility of the classroom teacher. So if we don't see, if we see a classroom teacher that we feel is so, is, is, is floundering or doesn't understand, or we see something discrepant in their data that looks different than the rest of their team, then the building principal, who should know that data better than anybody else, is going to go and work with that teacher. Becky Bush is involved, if it's a secondary teacher, Joe Alcarro is involved, Josh is involved, and it's more of a team approach for support that way, and we look at that data to say, hey, you know, what, what's going on here? How can we, how can we help you? So you're right, the professional development plan that we have right here is the broad strokes of, you know, how best to utilize that time, but when it comes to individual teachers, it really is, it has to be an individualized approach. And some of it happens very organically, and this is why collaborative conversations are critically important during professional development days, because if I'm Teacher A, sitting with my colleague Teacher B, and I'm looking at my data, and I'm seeing, like, I have 10 kids in red, and she has her class in green and blue, I'm going to say, what, what are you doing to make your, like, what are you doing right now to have your data look like this? And sometimes it's just, it's simply a matter of building trust within the organization that people feel comfortable to be vulnerable, as Josh said, to say, hey, I'm struggling with this, how can I, how can I get support, how can I get help? And I believe, I would like to believe, that the culture that we have worked to create in this district is one of high standards and high expectations, but one that is also, that we also provide support to. So that's, that's where we've tried to cultivate how, how we do professional development and how we meet the needs of our staff.
Dr. Howler, I'm going to ask a question John, John Fidler usually asks. How many other districts use instructional coaches? If that's been cut from our budget, but how many other school districts are, are using them right now?
I mean, at the, the IU ran a network, it used to be called PIC, which was the Pennsylvania Institute of Coaches. That was one of the largest network groups in the county. I mean, they would have upwards of, you know, 50, 60, sometimes 70 people come, because some districts have, you know, some districts fund coaches through title funding, some just as part of their budget. So I would say the majority of, greater than the majority, have instructional coaches in, in their, their districts, so, and, and have at, at least, at least two or three.
And it's something that we don't have, would, I mean, would either of you think that would be beneficial of something that we should be looking for in our budget?
I would 100% advocate for, for those. You know, right now, we have Dan Wilczek, who is, he's like, part-time tech, tech integration specialist, does a lot of those works, and then he's been a very valuable resource for us to, to go in and, and provide instructional coaching within the buildings. The teachers really, really respect him, and he does an absolutely phenomenal job. And, and, you know, that's, that's something we use part of a grant for, so, to be able to use that for right now.
I just, I, go ahead.
I was just going to say that, that is the end of our presentation, unless you have questions.
I just want to thank you for this presentation. On behalf of the Education Committee, I asked Dr. Hoyt and Dr. Howler to give us more presentations like this, because I do think the board really cares about the achievement of our students, the growth of our students, and that we really should make this a priority, learning more about what the district, the district's doing. I can tell that our administrative team has definitely made a priority, so I, I do want to hear what, what they're doing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add to that, um, there's this, I feel like there's this perception that vulnerability is a weakness, and it is not. Vulnerability is 100% a strength, and I know, you know, Dr. Hoyt, you had even said that and referenced some of it today, and I give you a lot of credit. It is hard to stand up here and, and look at the, the eight of us and not know how many people are even listening to this presentation and will in the future from anywhere around, and, and vulnerability is absolutely a strength. It's how we learn, it's how we get better, it's how we develop support for each other. And I would encourage you guys to keep doing it, because, because that's what's going to make us better, is by recognizing where we need to work.
Now, you sound like a life, life coach, so.
I've got a question, too, but you don't, you don't have to stand at the podium. First of all, one thing I didn't see on, on that, on that program, that presentation, first of all, is this going to be available to the public? This, are we going to post this somewhere?
Yes.
It is, okay. One thing I didn't see, and it's something I studied a lot this past summer, was summer reading programs. I read high school after high school, junior high school after high school, websites, articles. New York Times did a great, a great piece over the summer about summer reading programs, and I didn't see a summer reading program in your presentation. So, two questions. How does summer reading fit into your plan? And B, what does Exeter's summer reading program look like?
There's a pretty simple answer to that. Mr. Fidler, there is no current funding in the budget for a summer reading program. The only summer program that is currently funded by the district is extended school year for our special education students, and that's because that's a mandate. That's one of those required things that we have to do for students with significant needs. But beyond that, there's nothing allocated in the budget for.
Mrs. Harris, would teachers in the parks fall under that category? Because we do subsidize some of the.
We subsidize it, it's not our program, and it's not fully funded and run by us.
Well, the, the programs that I read, I mean, these are not, this is nothing that requires a subsidy, it's just each teacher creating a list, or a building creating a list of books for the kids to read over the summer.
So it's, it's easy to say that you're going to do something like that, but that becomes a compliance piece where we can put out lists, but then you have the access issue. So are we going to purchase those books for every single student here? And we have 3,700 students, are we going to purchase those books? Is it going to meet their individualized reading level? We could have a first grade classroom that we have students at the end of the year reading on a, you know, a kindergarten, a pre-kindergarten level, and then we could have a first grader in the same class reading on a fourth, fifth grade level. So is then, are we asking each teacher to come up with an individualized list of books for their child, for the children in their class? How many books is it? And who's going to do the purchasing of that? And then what's the accountability of that for kids that they actually did do it? We have a fantastic public library here in the township that they offer programs throughout the summer, and, you know, I think if, if parents want to, to encourage reading, that's the primary way that they should be doing that. But the, the funding is just simply not there for schools to be able to purchase books for students. And we could certainly say, well, you know, we have Chromebooks, and we're going to let kids have Chromebooks and take those home, but there's an accessibility piece with that as well. Not everybody has internet in their homes, and we don't have the funding here in the district to offer all of those families with hotspots. So while those things are all great and nice, and it, it becomes an accessibility issue for our families, and the kids who are reading, who are doing that over the summer, they have parents that are supportive and encouraging of that, and they're probably the ones that don't need to be reading. It's the kids that don't have all that accessibility and support in the home that really do need to be reading, and we can't, and how do you, how do you distinguish between that? And then how does the district in turn support and fund that? And is that the wisest and most appropriate use of funding? Because again, where's the accountability piece in that? Where, you know, we have a business administrator who has been tasked to figure out how to continue to support a district financially and meet all of our bills and salaries, and do it with the lowest tax increase that we possibly can. So we can certainly add instructional coaches, we can change out programs every couple of years, because there's districts that do that. They, they have, they're on their third, fourth reading program in the last eight years, but like, somebody has to pay for it. So we, we can put in anything.
Does the administration have a ballpark of how much a, a summer reading program would cost the district to even implement something like that?
I, I wouldn't even know where to begin, because, you know, again, do you select one book, do you select two books, and is it individualized for students?
I mean, we're, but we are talking X amount of, you, you would essentially need X amount of teachers to teach, or.
Well, if it's about distributing. If it's only distributing books, that's one cost. If it's, if we're talking, talking about running, running a, a summer program, that's like, you know, $50 an hour, and then.
I mean, we go back to, and, and look at ESSER from a few years ago, that essentially was funded by the district.
It was, and it provided transportation.
Quite a hefty cost, I believe.
It was almost $800,000, it was almost $800,000.
$800,000, so.
Well, one, one thing you could do is, is look at some of the programs, well, you just, I Googled them, that's how I found them, and call the administrators and find out how much it cost, how they paid for it. Maybe they got a grant, maybe they got a local company to help buy books. I, I'm concerned, because several of the articles that I read talked about the effectiveness of helping to eliminate the summer slide, some, some writers called it the summer melt, that, that three-month or two-and-a-half-month gap between graduation and the start of the next year, if, if kids aren't reading, then they've got to play catch-up.
We have a nationally recognized program here that started in Exeter with Matt Hathaway called TIPS.
Oh, yeah, sure.
That we don't fully fund. So if we're looking for a, a program that has been recognized at the federal level, and we think that this is really important for students, then I think we look to what we have already, and we commit funding to that for these kids.
That's the TIPS program, right?
That's the TIPS program.
But that's not for 3,800 kids.
It's not, and 3,800 kids don't need summer school, and they're not going to participate. And we used to run our own summer school program, and it was so poorly attended that, you know, we, we just, it wasn't, it wasn't responsible to do, and the attendance at TIPS was way more because it was at the pools. But again, you know, if you really want people to participate, you need to, you need to provide transportation. And because the families who can access that, their kids may not need it, and the families who really need access to it, they, they, they can't. So, as a parent, I, I'm not, I'm not going to send my child to a summer school program because I believe that she needs a break. So I don't want the district, I wouldn't take advantage of the district paying for something to have my child participate in that, because we have other priorities in the summer, nor does she need it. So I think that making a summer school program across the board, or instituting a reading program across the board that is required, I think it becomes compliance and not necessarily something that's going to improve. And, and I don't, I don't know how many teachers want to spend their whole summer in a classroom either, teaching, because they need a break and they need to refresh, and we have a lot of professional development.
Well, I'm not suggesting a, a classroom program, I'm simply suggesting a list that kids could pick from and, and read over the summer. One of the other points that, I think it was the Times article, made was that a, a summer reading program helps support the notion of, of love of reading, which we've talked about here, you've talked about it. Whereas if you don't read over the summer, then you're, you're attaching reading to school, and then it becomes a drudgery. I've got to read three books this, this semester in my English class. Whereas if you're reading all the time, that cultivates a love of reading, not just the ability to read.
So I'm, I'm hearing two different things here, and I'm trying to understand. At one hand, we're saying, we're just handing out a list of books that kids could read, and then I'm hearing also a summer reading program. So I'm trying to understand what, what is it that we're, we're saying would benefit the kids? A summer reading program, or just a teacher handing them a list of books?
A summer, a summer reading program that, that would consist at the very least of teachers suggesting books for the kids to read over the summer.
But not funded by the district?
Well, I, I think, I think we'd have to talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah. We'd have to talk about are grants available? I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm not a grant person.
Yeah.
My job is governance, not writing grants.
We don't have anybody in the district who's dedicated to writing grants. So if the decision is for the board to seek out and aggressively apply for grants, we're going to need somebody to do that, because there's nobody that has the time in their day to do that right now. We just, it took a lot for Brian to put together the SOLAR grant, and he's working on another grant, and it's, it's hours upon hours of work, and there's people that have other responsibilities, and we just, we don't have the personnel to be able to, to seek out and to write grants, and there are districts that do have people that write grants.
I was just going to say, I recall several years ago, Wilson advertised for a full-time Act 93 position for a full-time grant writer, because it was a full-time job, so.
Okay, thank you, that's very helpful.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? All right. Let's see, moving on, public comments on agenda items, no one has signed up. We're going to move on to committees, education with Mrs. Wilson.
Hey, the first thing on the Education Committee will be a list of the following staff conferences. Does anybody have any questions about those staff conferences that are listed? They're all $0. Okay, then, there's a report of two field trips that have already been approved within the 60-mile radius for the senior high students for their, part of their college and career readiness day, and then Jackson Maldurain and Owan Creek will be heading to the junior high to see the Junior High Musical on November 13th.
Allison, I had a question. The, the four schools listed, are those the only schools that we, our seniors visit? Or is this one of several days like this, or it's not clear on that?
So my understanding is it's just, for that specific day, those are the ones, but would they do a lot with other, as part of college and career readiness, other colleges and such, so?
Okay.
To my understanding, it's not really about the colleges per se that are listed, like, trying to match those colleges up with students, but just to give students an, an experience seeing what different college campuses are like. So it's not really like, oh, these kids want to go to Millersville, so we're going to take them to Millersville. It's more like, here's an opportunity to see what Millersville looks like, and to see what Cootstown looks like, and just kind of have that opportunity to see a college campus.
Yeah, because I was, I was, did a little research, and all of the schools here, except RAC, have very high acceptance rates. Do we take kids to more selective schools, so they get to see, see that?
So we do a comp, like, we invite a lot of colleges in, you know, they talk to them. There's a lot of virtual tours now. I, off the top of my head, I won't be able to tell you the exact number of list of where they go for different ones, but we have a great coordination between our education and here, so that students are aware of all of the possibilities available to them.
Okay, good, thanks.
Okay, next on the list, we have a number of early graduation requests to approve. And then we have the attached Title I letter of agreement between the Exeter Township School District and the BCIU, and this is to provide Title I equitable services to non-public schools. And this is a yearly thing that we sign and agree to. Yes, questions about that? And then it is also recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the purchase of the Respondus Lockdown Browser application for use, for use in grades five through 12. There is a cost associated with that of $3,038, and this was budgeted for, and it was due to changes that Google made.
My understanding of this is this is to prevent, if they're doing a, a test or something in a browser, this is to prevent them from being able to go to another tab or look up other information? Correct, okay. All right, makes sense, thank you.
All right, that, and that will be the extent of our agenda for the Education Committee for September, but I did want to bring to your attention, last night, I went to the junior high meet-the-teacher night, and Mr. Fidler, in response to you, they had an AI usage chart that I have not seen before, so I was asking Dr. Hoyt about it. Dr. Haller included it today when she gave us some report, some information, so you wanna check it out. It is, um, an evidence-based model that the students will be using, kind of like a red, yellow, green chart of how they should be using AI, how they should be interacting with AI. Red being like, you shouldn't be using it at all, um, then yellow, like, it, it kinda lays out exactly what they should be doing. So, um, it is, and Dr. Haller included it, so you can click on it and check it out. But it is something that, like, I think you said, like, the teachers got together a committee, um, to work on, so that everybody was working with the same language and, and following the same plan. So, and that was presented last night to families at the meet the teacher night at the junior high.
And this is for all courses, or certain courses?
Um, yes, I, I saw it in both the social studies room and, uh, with the principals of writing room, so I imagine.
It's our, it's our K to 12 framework for AI. So, when you had asked about it the last meeting, we, the teachers hadn't got a chance to get together to meet with that. That, that work happened in between the last board meeting and this. So, that was part of the work that I had mentioned that they were gonna be doing, and they did, did a great job, uh, putting that together, and, uh, that was provided to our teachers and share with our students, parents, and they're gonna have it on their Schoology pages. So, it, it's a framework that a lot of districts across the entire US are using. They just tailor it to meet their needs.
Right, you know, one of the, one of the, um, first things I read about AI was more in the higher education, but that a lot of colleges were stopping out-of-class papers and having them do in-class assignments with a pencil and a piece of paper instead of using their laptops. Have we looked into that, or are we in, in fact, doing that? Fewer out-of-class assignments, more in-class assignments on, uh, you know, fool's cap and a, and a pencil or a pen?
Well, I, I don't necessarily know about the pen, pencil and paper, because we do use the Chromebooks a lot, but be, you do a lot more within the scope of the class time because the kids have the teacher there. You know, there's a lot of students who go home that if they don't have somebody there who can help them, or they have other things going on, independent work can become a tremendous challenge and a tremendous stressor, so you, you do see a lot of those types of assessments that are, and, and assignments and such are being in class, so one, they can get feedback, the, the teacher can monitor their progress, um, and such. There's still work that goes home, but, you know, as a parent myself of a high school child, I see a lot of that as well. A lot of what he does is in the scope of the school day, um, you know, and then there's some other independent work that wouldn't necessarily need, have the use of AI to help him at all. But, um, but it's those bigger things they're, they're doing within the scope of the time they have with them, so.
Right, and do the Chromebooks have internet access, or are they just a unit that can be used for a, like a word processor?
Yeah, so, a Chromebook is just simply a device that runs off the Chrome browser, so if you have internet access, you have access to the bra, the browser, and then we use the, uh, Google Workspace, things like Doc Sheets, Slides, and such, where they can create projects, share projects, and, uh, word processing, all those different types of things.
Right, but it, but they don't, they can't take, I mean, I used to run into this when I taught at RAC, where I caught a student one day with his phone copying an essay. He was just staring at his phone and writing, and I, he failed, of course, but, um, if a student has access to the internet, gets a prompt for a question, she can then go to the internet and find, uh, do an AI query, and.
That's why we have the Respondus Lockdown Browser.
Well, yeah, we have the Respondus, but teachers are becoming very aware of when students start to use, um, AI.
Okay.
So, it's, it's become, it's, again, it's, it's a learning tool, but, and that's a lot of the work that we're doing, the recognizing of this as well. So, you know, teachers have a lot of tools in their toolbox to figure out if a student has used AR or not, AI or not, and from there, it's, you know, it's a learning moment for the student, and, and, you know, from there, they, they move on, so.
Right, and can you, can you give us an example of, of an assignment that would allow AI as opposed to something that wouldn't allow AI?
Sure, go ahead.
So, last night, Mrs. Jory Zinski Boyer showed us how she can, um, upload a copy of the Declaration of Independence.
Okay.
And then students can interact with the Declaration of Independence and ask it questions. So, it can say, like, what did you mean when, when it says this? And then the Declaration of Independence will respond. Actually, I think she said that it was the Constitution. The Constitution can respond and say this, and then the Constitution can ask back and say, did you understand this part? Or, or it makes connections for them.
Got it.
So, that's just one way that she shared how she's trying to use AI, um, and teach, teach students to use it as a tool that they can learn from.
Right, right, good, okay, thanks a lot.
And I'll just say that ironically, my, uh, my place of employment launched an AI model today, which, which was interesting, and it's, uh, we, it's funny you guys talked about today, because we've used Smart Goals for, for decades, and so basically you have to put three Smart Goals in, and so you free text your Smart Goal, and then you click on AI Assist, and AI Assist takes your language that you wrote, but it puts the S, the M, the A, the R, the T, so it sequentially tells you based on your text how it defines the Smart Goal, and then you add that as your goal. So, you're still doing the actual work, it's just very quickly defining it for you and making it neat and pretty.
Got it, good, thank you.
Definitely think it's an ongoing thing that we keep learning about more and more every day. That's it for me.
All righty, uh. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Uh, do we have any contingency plans if the AI becomes sentient? Just wondering.
Yes. I, with my Alex and my Siri, I'm very nice to it, so I always say please and thank you, so that way when it does happen, I'm on their good side.
Thank you, Dr. Hoyt, I appreciate that, I just, just wanna be sure. Uh, finance and audit with Mr. Morgan.
Thank you. So, uh, first up and only up, we have the 2025 Conrad Siegel ACA Employer Reporting Proposal, and it's gonna be recommended, um, that we use them for, uh, health and welfare benefit consulting services. The proposal was attached, is attached, and the 2025 fee is unchanged from the prior year and includes the same service. So, this is a renewal at no additional cost. Any questions? Siri?
Do we have a, do we have a sense of how many employees use this, Tim?
I do not, do you?
It's over 500, and some employees have to be reported to the IRS. And what they do is the calculations to make sure that everyone has offered, that can take insurances or rejected insurances, and that no one is, um, what do I say, overcompensated for their, their portion of the insurance, or undercompensated.
Got it, so 7,500 for.
I think this is like, eighth or ninth year that you have to report to the.
Yeah.
You know, send out 1095s to the employees. You have to send them to them, but they don't have to report on their taxes. But they do, you know, I think it was up to last year, they had to say, yes, I do have insurance, or no, I do not have insurance. But this is also proof they have insurance.
Got it.
Or were offered insurance.
Okay, good, thank you.
That's it for me. Okay, thank you, Mr. Morgan. Um, Facilities and Transportation Committee, Dr. Battler, do you have anything? Okay, thank you, Dr. Battler. Personnel Committee, Dr. Hearing.
It would be recommended that the board approve the attached updated job description for the gifted teacher. Sorry. Like I was saying, it would be recommended that the board approve the attached updated job description for the gifted teacher position. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hearing, and Policy Committee, Mrs. Schaefer, if you could take that, please?
Sure, thank you. Um, on the agenda, we have three policies up for second reading, Policy 222, Tobacco and Baping Products, Policy 236.1, Threat Assessment, and Policy 824, Maintaining Professional Adult Student Boundaries. And that is all.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Next, we have Public Comments on Non-Agenda Items, again, no one has signed up. And then we'll look at moving the following items to our September voting agenda. We have meeting minutes, items 5A, C, D, and E, 6A, 8A, and 9A. And are, are there any board members that would like to be heard at this time?
I would, Mr. Mill.
Yes, Mr. Morgan.
So, while I'm sure that some of the public will scrutinize what I'm about to say, I'm gonna say it anyway. Here we go. You know, I, I always say walk a mile in somebody else's shoes, and, um, the truth is, is that it's easy for anyone to say, you know, how we should or shouldn't spend taxpayer dollars, and I think that we have an obligation at this table to always act in the best interests of our, of our students and our taxpayers, and sometimes that comes at a cost. And we really don't know every day what happens, as well as, as the, the laws that govern an organization like a school district. And we task our administration every year to be accountable for academic achievement. And there's one thing we heard over and over again today, it's that we're not funded to do that. We're not funded to do that. The fact is that you can cut your lawn with a lawnmower, or you can cut your lawn with a pair of scissors. You'll get the same result, but it's gonna take a lot longer to do it one way than it is another way. And I think our district is doing a great job of getting that result, but it's gonna take a lot longer. And I think as a board, if we are interested in, I, I'm not necessarily seeing those results faster, but having efficiencies in getting those results, it's going to take more budgetary dollars to do that. And every year that we, that, that we pass a budget, it gets more and more difficult, and this year was no, no different. And I, I applaud the fact that we all work well together, despite us having some different opinions, which is why we have a great board, but if we do not look at some of these things that can create better efficiencies for our team to do what we ask them to do, we have to accept the fact that they're doing what they can, the best they can, with what they have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Anyone else? Yes, Dr. Battler.
I would just like to apologize, I guess, to Dr. Haller, when she was standing up there and, and Mr., um, Fidler, dear lord, I wanted to call him John, I'm so sorry, Mr. Fidler, had asked about the, when the, um, math came out. I only knew because my daughter being in kindergarten, they had a huge thing regarding, like, thinking outside the box, and we want our kids to be able to do math this way, and I wasn't being judgmental or anything like that, I just wanted to let you guys know that. I really appreciate everything that you guys put into the presentation, I appreciate everything the teachers have done. I understand that when you get a curriculum and it's missing components, and you're like, where's time? Where's money? Like, where, where did it go? You know, and where's the one-minute sheet of being able to do multiplication really fast, types of things? You're like, what's going on? Um, so I just wanted to let you know that. I didn't, like I said, I only knew it because it just happened to be when Emily started kindergarten, I went to all of those meetings that they had, um, at Owatn Creek.
I, I appreciate you saying that because it, it was four superintendents ago.
Yes.
That this was implemented by.
Anyone else? Okay. Uh, there will be an executive session immediately following the adjournment of this meeting to discuss personnel in regards to expiring administrator contracts, in addition to reviewing , uh, active litigation against the district. Uh, if nothing else, our next meeting will be our voting meeting on Tuesday, September 16th at 7:00 PM. If there are no objections, we'll adjourn the meeting. Hearing non-meeting is adjourned.